Hello, everyone. I'm Mike O'Reilly, Chairman of the Town of Monroe Playing and Zoning Commission. It is June 18th, 2025, 7:02 PM. Welcome to this special meeting of the commission. You'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the covenant of what is to be held, one nation, on the God, in the Israel, delivered in the just as far. Okay, thank you for the roll starting right.
Dominic Panici present.
Leanne Brozzi, Commissioner.
Robert Westling, Commissioner.
Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay, we're going to seat Commissioner Panici tonight. We'll go to general public participation. If anyone from the public is here tonight, they would like to address the commission on matters not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Anyone online, public participation, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing, EFP 2023-4 is going to be continued until July the 17th, as noted. Second public hearing, SUB 2025-02 is going to be held tonight. It's continued from 5:15. This is a Town of Monroe application, which will be presented by Kathleen.
The reason we kept this item open, this was heard two meetings ago, was because we are waiting for the Conservation and Water Resource Commission comments. They have since gotten back to us stating that they have no comments. So at this time, we are prepared to move forward with that item. In front of you, you have a map of the potential proposed location of the fire hydrant from the Fire Marshal. You'll see it has a little red dot in front of it. His preferred location is just as you come into the first driveway, really right at the point. This would allow him to service both St. Jude's, the church, as well as the community center. I have talked to Public Works and Facilities. Everybody's aware of this and is willing to coordinate this to get another fire hydrant here in order to support both the town and the St. Jude's facility. And yes, and then the only other comment, so if the commission would be entertaining an approval tonight, we would want to approve it with the condition of putting a fire hydrant in, in order to aid the Town of Monroe Fire Department. The other item is, is we are waiving our open space requirement in its entirety because the subdivision is really putting the library parcel back to its pre-existing condition, and then we didn't feel like it was necessary to provide a payment in lieu of, since it would be the town paying the town. And we didn't have the space to do an actual dedication of land. So this is technically a public hearing though still?
Yes.
So after any questions from the commission?
Are there any questions from the commission?
No questions.
All right, any questions from the public, comments for against this patient? Anyone online, if any questions or comments?
Friendly reminder, if you're online, please use the raise your hand function.
None? We're going to close this?
Yes.
We are now closing subdivision application 2025-02. Moving on, third public hearing. SUB 2025-03, which is to Victoria Drive, is to continue in 6:25. Kathleen, do you have updated exhibits?
One of the exhibits is in front of me tonight. We did just get it this afternoon, so apologies that it is just getting to you now. Since our last meeting on the 5th, we received exhibit number 10, which was the certificate of mail-ins for the public hearing. And exhibit number 11 is an updated subdivision plan clarifying the final configuration for the open space requirement. Is Brian coming? He told me he was.
We're waiting for someone? Oh, he's coming.
Although I believe someone from Jason Edwards Associates is here, so I just use Ian, I just use the allowed to talk, permitted to talk function.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. For the record, this is Ian Eller. I am an engineer with J. Edwards and Associates. Jason is unfortunately tied up in another meeting, so he asked me to jump on and answer any questions you might have regarding this open space map. The hope was that by giving it a little color and a little more boldness on certain things, we could show you precisely what we were doing.
The open space is in the upper left-hand corner.
Yeah, so it
I have, I can share it?
Yes, beautiful. I have to make you a panelist, so hold on. All right, so you should now be promoted to panelist, promote to panelist. Do you have to, okay, on your end, that should permit you to share.
Sorry about that. So when I hit share, it says sharing is not turned on.
We changed systems again for the third time. Okay, I'm going to make you a co-host. Don't, don't abuse it, but that should allow you to share.
Hand out smaller copies.
Yeah.
Yeah, one, two, three, four. Hopefully your eyes are better than mine.
There we go.
You got a big copy.
So is this the alternate, or this is, is this, is this alternative to what they have in front of them?
No, this, this is the plan that you were sent earlier today, just before the meeting. As I understand it, it is the same thing that we had designed before. There was a question about the total percentages required, as I understand it, for amount of wetlands and so on and so forth. What we did this afternoon was complete that plan and try and show more clearly where the open space was, which is the red hatched, and what areas of the lot are wetlands, so that we could show that we are sort of running those positions, or running those percentages, rather.
All right, can I take over just one second?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the, in our last, Brian McCann's able to show him for the record, representing the applicant central, I'll see. In our last meeting, you probably recall that we talked about the bike trail and how we like ideally that to count towards the open space. I have the easement with you. It's 0.57 acres. If anyone wants to see it, I have copies for everyone, so you can review that. The bike trail easement is directly to the south of that crosshatched red line that is directly above that number 34 there on the plan. Okay, so it basically parallels the wetland boundary. Now, everything north of that line, except for the areas in the, in the crosshatch are wetland. It's suffice it to say, it's mostly wetland. The conversation that I had with Kathleen is that you have a regulation that says that there's a maximum percentage, that the percentage of wetlands in a dedicated open area is restricted by the total percentage of the wetlands on the lot. So essentially, what the predicament, at least that I was faced with, is if we are going to increase the total amount of dedication, we will also increase the total amount of wetlands. And that poses a problem for that one individual regulation. Now, it's kind of what I, what I said to Kathleen is, it's kind of a form over substance. And I hate form over substance because you ideally want the most area of, I would have a guess, you would want the most area of open space. And we can create an alternate where we decrease the amount of open space so as to meet that regulation. Or I think what might be a better alternative is that you waive the percentage regulations so that we could dedicate more open space. It's entirely, it's entirely up to the commission. But I think we've, we've shown, and Ian can show in walking through the actual calculations, I think we've shown that we can satisfy either. But if we, if in order to meet the percentage, we actually need to decrease the total area, which isn't ideal.
Yes, I did some research this afternoon. I also talked to the town attorney. And in the same way that we believe, so legally, the state gives individual planning and zoning commissions the ability to waive their subdivision regulations as long as it's written in our subdivision regulations granting us that power. Our regulations do grant us that power. It actually gives section numbers of which exact regulations can be, and what we would be waiving would be Regulation Section 111-303(c). And what we would be waiving is to increase the usable open space area, to decrease the usable open space area. So instead of having it to be 50%, it would be lowered down, of which we believe that, yes, it can be waived. It's a little, there's like something written in our regulations, it's kind of counteraction to that, but I, I believe the way that this town is interpreting it, and the way we're actually interpreting on to Victoria is that we have the available, to Victoria and 707, 733 Monroe Turnpike, both in the same way is that we can waive that regulation.
Okay, so this is one option?
Yes.
Yeah, but let's, let's talk about the percentages real fast, if that's okay, just so that they have their heads wrapped around it. And correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is right now, the total existing wetlands on the site is 52%. So about half of the total area of the site includes wetlands. The proposed open space area, assuming that we are counting everything that you see colored plus, plus the bike trail, which is conveyed to the Town of Monroe, and I'm okay using that in the, in the calculation when we think about that holistically, and we do believe that an easement is a stance. It's about, where did I get to? 78% of the lot, of the open space area is wetlands. So the entire site is 52% of the area covered by wetlands. The open space, including the bike trail, would have 78% of that area as wetlands. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, that sounds about right.
So you would be increasing, you would be, right now, 50% of the lot can be wetlands or excess of space. We're increasing that to 78%. But the, and what I see and what we had talked about as well is I don't have an issue with the entire side of the bike path being open space because you don't want that developed. That's a Town of Monroe bike path. We want to make sure that it's, you know, stayed in that kind of condition and in that view shed, you know, for people that are, that are utilizing it.
That's already, that's already, that's already used that we use it, right, right?
Yes, well, we have an easement right now just for the bike path. Technically, they own on the other side of the property.
We have, we had it through there, right?
Yeah.
So this is one option. What's the other option?
That actually is, I can't tell if he has the wetland shown. We have one option without the two pockets of
Oh, so you would just cut down that lot?
Of wetland. I personally think, we'd love to hear your thoughts. I personally think what makes the most sense is
We rushed this, guys. Nope, it's recording. I did it. It just doesn't show it for me now in the upper right-hand corner. Stop recording, which means it's recording. All right, I'm good. Continue. Apologies.
I think what makes the most sense is to have the dedication towards east of that, including the bicycle trail and everything northeast of the bicycle trail. As I said to Kathleen this afternoon, I think you would want to preserve the surrounds of that. I think it makes sense to preserve the surrounds of that bicycle trail. Think it makes, makes sense. Obviously, a lot of it should be protected via the jurisdiction from the inland. But there is some area that is not, and we don't know what's going to happen to the wetland in the future, if it's going to change in, in size and shape. I think it makes sense to have those surrounds protected, so I think our, our proposal would be that the, the areas to the, like I said, the northeast of that bicycle trail, including the bicycle trail, be dedicated as open space. And Kathleen and I had a conversation about a conservation easement versus a fee simple deed. We would, we would prefer the dedication and a perpetual easement. And that's simply because it wouldn't directly affect the zoning minimums, the dimensional minimums, the setbacks, et cetera, if it wasn't a, obviously, a fee simple. The struggle with a fee simple transfer is that it, it creates a new law. And then we would have to deal with potential issues associated with that.
So you want that for the entire property? You, like, you're, you want to dedicate, you want a conservation easement for the entire property, not just for, I thought when we were talking about, we, I thought when we were talking about, we were asking if the easement for the bike path could be included as part of the total acreage for it?
That's a reasonable point.
And I thought the assumption was then the rest of it would be deeded to the Town of Monroe. But are you saying you want the entire thing to be still under the ownership and just have a conservation easement in favor of the Town of Monroe?
I was, I was, yes, I was anticipating a conservation easement for the
For the entirety of the open space area?
Well, we could talk about it if that. Yeah, I think, I think I understood, which is that it's, it's for the zoning rights, right? I mean, if you're creating, if you're dividing all fee simple interest, you're essentially doing again what we're doing tonight, which is dividing property. You're splitting it into a third lot. And that would create, at least from that eastern half, that would create, that would then become, the bicycle path would then become a property line, a real property line. And so that we, this, this property, which is the proposed daycare, would have some setback restrictions against that eastern property. And I also explained to Kathleen that I just, I didn't see anything in the regulations that said anything about that it would have to be a fee simple, that it must be a fee simple transfer. In fact, in the subsection D, it says, it states that the applicant shall propose how, via what instrument, that they will propose the dedication of open space. So our proposal would be via a, a permanent deed restriction in the form of a conservation easement.
Conservation easement for the whole thing?
For the, the areas including the bicycle path and northeast of the bicycle path.
So you don't have enough space to give us open, the full 15% open space with less than 50% wetlands, right? So that's the way you're looking at?
The requirement's 15%
Total.
Of the total area. We could easily do that. We could do that, we could do that five times over, but that's, that's not an issue.
50% has to be.
But there is a, another regulation which says that the proportion of inland wetlands or steep slopes to upland area must not exceed the total lot proportion of inland wetlands and steep slopes, steep slopes to upland area.
With the proportion within the open space
Yes.
Shouldn't exceed the proportion of
The total proportion of the entire, of the entire lot.
Each lot or both?
The entire piece of property, both of us.
It does. You're set.
What we're saying is that we have no problem providing the 15%. The percentage can be a little bit tricky because of the amount of wetlands on that corner of the property.
If I may clarify for the commission?
Sure, yeah.
This is Ian Eller again. Just to be clear, on the open space that we have designed here, that is the 15% required. Its shape that you can see is a little bit odd. It's based on the fact that we had to build it that way in order to make sure only 52% of it is wet. No more than that, correct? So what the idea is, is to give that whole section as, as open space, rather than have this strange shape, would require that much more than that portion would be 52%. But as it stands with this map I'm showing you here, we reach those, both of those aspects of the regulations.
Okay. I get it. Yes, so there's nothing wrong with that, right?
I think for me, my concern is now thinking it's not going to be owned by the town. As I think one of the benefits that was discussed at the beginning was that in the small area of non-wetland area, we could squeeze in, you know, some parking spaces if we wanted to for people that is using the bicycle trail. Whereas now, for making the whole thing a conservation easement, I mean, we could adjust that in the language. We just, I think we would just, we would just need some time to figure out how to make sure we're doing it and voting on it in a way that, you know, we could use part of that. Whereas like conservation easements are usually to do exactly what we said, no building, just to conserve it. Whereas if it was going to be owned by the Town of Monroe, that would give us more flexibility to do some things that we want to do to make improvements at what is, what is, you know, kind of a trailhead, you know, in this area.
Do you care how it's conveyed?
Arnold, pardon for the applicant. Yes and no. What I don't want to do is run into a problem with the building. And one of the things we discussed is if we give it to the town, and I then maintain it as we have over the last year of our ownership and a year that we were looking at it, at least I know that we're cutting, cutting it and maintaining the trail. But if we gave it as a conservation easement, Kathleen, with the proviso that if the town wanted the trailhead parking, the only reason I'm thinking that we're going to take care of it with the building when I'm up there, this just puts more on to the town to then maintain. So for those two reasons, we sort it. It's a balancing act. We're happy to do whatever the town would like, but, you know, that then I'll, that means that when I go to cut it or maintain it, I need permission from the town. If I give it as a conservation easement, we can cut it and maintain it without having to come back to the town. So I think we could still do a conservation easement, Kathleen, with the proviso that we could call that whatever parcel at some point that the town wanted to add parking, we would have no problem with that.
Yeah. And signage? I mean, it's just, yeah, thinking.
Yeah, parking sign. But again, we're, we're flexible. I just didn't want to put more burden on them maintaining it and me getting yelled at for maintaining it.
And that's, I don't see that as, I understand what Kathleen says. I think that's a great point. I don't see that as a legal impediment because you could easily carve out a portion and have a different type of, of, of language. Here, the, the purpose is to preserve open space. And, and, and the spirit of the regulation says for recreation, you know, passive recreation, walking trails, that sort of thing. If you have a subdivision with 20 houses, you want to make sure that there's some green areas where people can recreate. It's not, it's not truly a conservation or preservation easement that, that says, don't touch. You can't go in there, don't touch, let it be natural, don't cut any trees, don't trim any bushes. So with that being said, I don't see any reason why we couldn't, if, if this is the wish of the commission, why we couldn't carve off a piece and have, you know, two different, while it's all covered under an easement, there's an open space easement, and then there's a conservation easement. And then within the language of the open space easement, it allows certain uses such as parking areas or
Can we do that, Kathleen?
Signs.
I believe so.
Well, can we get something with the legal? We're going to get something from the attorney, legal?
Well, we would have, I mean, we always write it in the approvals that the legal instruments have to be approved by legal prior to them being able to file a subdivision map. So Frank would have to review it. But if you have any questions for him prior to that, we could close the public hearing. I would just, I would just have to talk to him before the next meeting so that we have some, or we could keep the public hearing open. But I would have to get an extension from the applicant.
Well, I'd rather see if that'll work, because I can understand your point about the parking over here. Like, we need space, so, and it connects to the trailer, right? Right?
Yeah, you can absolutely, in conservation, I have seen agricultural conservation easements where like you've been able to build, you know, workforce housing for farmers, you know, as part of it. Like, there's definitely flexibility in, you know, a conservation easement and things of that nature to permit that. So that we can definitely do and accommodate. It's just really what that language looks like at the end of the day. And is there anything else we want to make sure is included in it besides parking and signage? And typically, this commission has, has not done this, where we've allowed, or we've allowed this still to be under their ownership, partially because it benefits the applicant in the sense of they can count this towards their coverage calculation. So they're going to come in front of you for the development of this actual parcel. You know, in the near future, they already put an application in. So this does allow them to use this land for coverage and things of that nature, so that they can make the size of the building larger. Sometimes this commission, you know, oftentimes this commission doesn't do that. We actually do a full dedication where it gets deeded to the town because we want the lots to be individual. I think the reason that we would make the exception for this particular parcel is for all the reasons that we just talked about. It's very unique in the fact that there is an easement in favor of the Town of Monroe actually bisecting their parcel, of which case, you know, this allows us to preserve that area through a conservation easement, meet the subdivision open space regulations, and in return, they're willing to still maintain it, you know, for this area as, you know, as a benefit to the fact that they still get to use that as part of their total property. So I think in this situation, if the commission deemed it appropriate, you know, it would be because of it's this unique situation.
Okay. Questions?
So as presented, I'm not clear, because the applicant is going to maintain it.
They've been maintaining the bicycle path.
Not the physical path, just like the brush around the
The area.
Or the actual path too.
And it's going to and it's going to continually maintain it?
Arnold, pardon for the applicant. I believe there is a mechanism in town that somebody is supposed to be maintaining the bike path and everything.
I think the legal obligation is on the town, and I, again, I should just hand out this document since I've referenced it.
I believe the legal obligation, as my attorney has pointed out, is on the town. On the other hand, while we've been maintaining that piece of property, we cut the sides of the path because otherwise the path literally becomes two feet. While I'm doing the other maintenance, we cut it so the path is six feet wide, so that it, more usage. We get a lot of walkers at lunchtime through vitrinox. Somebody, other employee ers in the area, they tend to walk. And so we've just kept it up, and it's because we're cutting it more often than probably the town resources allow.
And that's another, and that's another reason why it's unique, Kathleen pointed to something unique is the, the fact that the trail is connected to other properties and other parking areas. I think the commission should, I'm not saying that it doesn't, that it shouldn't desire a, a parking space or two here, but I still think it would sort of serve a purpose if it didn't have those two parking spaces because it's an active trail. People are accessing it from other areas. I'll pass out the easement just through here. identification.
I have another question.
Hey. Not moving your lot lines or anything is going to accomplish anything, right?
Sorry?
Not moving your lot lines are going to accomplish anything here, the two parcels?
Not moving the lot line?
Yeah, if you want to move the lot line a little bit closer to this other section, we're going to get, that's two point six, you have three point three. If you move the lot line, did we get more or no?
For the, the, the subdivision for the open space, you're saying?
Yeah.
Um, well, it's, it's, it's more than enough on that, on that northeastern corner.
You said you couldn't meet the percentage, right? Because of what it was here.
The, the mixture.
Yeah.
The, the, the ratio, I guess.
If you move the lot lines, would you be able to move, get the percentage or no?
We could, we could with the, like, like Ian said, with the more unusual um, lot shape and, and, and perhaps reducing the total area of the open space. But it just, it just seems, at least to me, like, again, form over substance, if you're trying to just get to that ratio versus actually preserving the largest area and the area that really warrants the preservation adjacent to that bicycle path, the bike trail. I, I, I wouldn't see it as a preferred alternative, but that's entirely up to the commission.
I'm not too big, I'm not big king of the conservation easement. Because we have to rely on the property owner when they sell that off to handle all that. Instead of the town.
They handle what?
Taking care of bicycle track and everything like that.
I mean legally, we are on the hook for maintaining the bicycle trail per the easement.
For using parking for down the corner for people to park there and walk the bike path?
Technically, that's not under the easement. So you are correct on that one.
Right. There's no way around it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's little, I think there's little benefit to the town in taking a fee simple ownership of the property of the open space parcel versus a open space, uh, easement. Um, the residents still have the right to use it. It still gets protected in perpetuity. Um, there's, there's, there's little, if any, I think, benefit to actually having fee simple um, ownership. That, where it does make a difference is like Kathleen just said, is that because the property gets retained in the entity, in the owner's central LLC, then they have the ability to uh, use those property bounds, the larger property bounds for things like setbacks and et cetera.
All the dimensional requirements.
The dimensional requirements, thank you.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
So taking into consideration the conservation easement, um, path. Hypothetically, the applicant cites up, you know, taking care of the bike path. You know, sells the property, whatever, new owners aren't interested in it. Would there be any issues with the town getting in there at that point to, to maintain the bike path?
For the actual bike path? No, because that easement is already existing in place. That's the copy that he gave you there.
Yeah.
And then the question is, is if we were to develop a parking lot, we would have to do, we have to figure out if at the moment we could do a conservation easement with language to allow the town the ability to develop a portion for parking and signage associated with bicycle trail and access to the parking area by residents town of Monroe and I don't know if we would want, I need to put in language of the maintenance. Technically, the maintenance would be on the owners of the property.
And, and taking into consideration the, the, the spirit of the conservation portion of the easement, you know, how, how much are we conserving by putting in a parking lot? You know, if that were the route that we're going to go.
Um, I do believe it meets the spirit because the idea is that fifty percent of it is usable open space to be used for recreational purposes. And I would say that the parking lot is in order to support recreational services, you know, on, associated with a bicycle trail. So I don't have any issues with that. That's, that's kind of the whole point of having fifty, of that fifty percent regulation is so that we could put in passive trails or we could put in something to support a trailhead, um, or things of that nature. The tough part was when we get us a, a piece of property that's a hundred percent wetlands. You know, we can't do anything with that because it's actual wetlands, which is why we want to make sure fifty percent of it is at least what we consider to be usable space. We just don't often actually enact that portion of the usable space because we usually get a couple acres here, a couple acres there. It doesn't connect to anything large where it would make sense for the town to invest money into improvements. Whereas this is a really unique situation where it, it, you know, it might make sense to actually do something here if there's a need.
And what about our, our, you know, I'm a little unclear on the usage of this road, um, from prior applications. Are, are, are we more or less allowed to be routing traffic down to this potential parking lot and utilize that road?
I believe this was discussed and the answer is yes, but if you guys want to speak on that at this time again.
Have anything on that? It's a private road.
It's a private.
It's a private road.
Uh, it's the, so the developer, I believe, right?
If you could introduce yourself again, sorry.
Arnold Park, uh, for the applicant. I believe the road is, uh, now.
Uh, Victoria, uh, Paul Sound for, for the applicant. Um, are we talking Victoria Drive?
Yes.
Yeah, I, my understanding is that is public.
No.
No, it's not.
It's literally tells it wasn't.
Now, the, the access to it, and this is where we ran into the issue in ten thirty-six.
Yes.
The left-hand side, so the piece that we're talking about, has access to Victoria Road. Ten thirty-six was never granted access to Victoria Road.
Who owns the property? What's Victoria Road right now? Because I don't think, we were told that somebody else owned it, that it's not our road. Not a town.
I could, I could look into that. But typ- typically when it's, it's, it's within a subdivision, this was much, obviously we know this is a much larger subdivision that included Amazon and included Fish Porodocks. Typically what happens in those situations, if it's going to be, if it's dedicated as a, uh, proposed as a private drive, is that you would keep it in the name of the original entity and you would give access, uh, rights of way to the individual lots.
Well, we, at one meeting, we were told that there was no right of way onto that road.
For thirty-six Main Street.
But to, I don't see, unless you have some, something that shows.
That thirty-six Main Street was not part of that.
Right, so you have something that states that somewhere that.
That would be nice if we had something indicating what has access and what doesn't.
What doesn't?
Yeah, when, when, when this was subdivided, so then I think I, Arnold Park, uh, I think I can explain. So the right-hand side was never deeded. We could try to get that access. The left-hand side uh, was deeded so we could put driveways in and everything else. Somehow when all of the subdivision was done years ago, ten thirty-six was owned by somebody and they, they never got the permission. But the left-hand side was always part of that. So I know because we need access to parking. And so again, we would be allowed to, by ownership, give the town if they wanted trailhead parking on this side. On the other side, it's more difficult because we don't have access.
That's, that makes sense. I, I like Leon said, I'd like to.
We can, we'll.
We'd like to see it.
We, we checked because again, uh, we will be here for a different building. They, we checked with them and, you know, before they got interested that they could actually get access to. So it, it's unusual that one side of the street has access and the other doesn't.
Yep.
And we're working on the access for ten thirty-six.
Yep. Okay.
Paul Stone for the applicant. So it is, Victoria Drive is owned by Amazon.
Yeah. And that's what the RGIS shows, but it's not always on.
No, that's right.
Accurate. I'm trying to pull up the map associated.
There's a field card. There's a link to the field card.
Yeah, and it's map three, two, 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 and there's another one, but I just can't get them all up right now.
And this was originally part of that parcel, which is why it has rights of way over that private drive.
But the town has not.
The public, yeah, the public, that's a different, that's a different story. We could, we could certainly look into that. But like I said, I think that this, regardless of whether the public has rights of access here, I think we should remember that this, this is a connected trail that's being used. It's actively being used. People are accessing it. I don't think that that's um, you know, if we can't provide two parking spaces, that, that it's really going to defeat the purpose of the, of the trail.
I, I would agree with that. I just want to make sure that we're looking at this from all angles before we, you know, I agree a hundred percent, but if we're going to take into consideration the parking, we got to take into consideration accessibility.
Sure. Yeah.
You know.
And I could do that. And I could, I could even propose, um, what, what Kathleen was, was looking for, the specific language. And I, you can run that through your town attorney. What I, what I would, what I would suggest is that we, while this all is covered by one easement, that we have a division line where there's two different, two individual documents with different rights and restrictions.
Okay.
So one is more of like a, a, what I would call a, a, a preservation, you know, area versus, uh, an active recreation that, that allows certain things like trails and paths.
Yeah, I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just for clarification. Now, we're looking at this as a conservation easement or a fee simple that the town would, would own. What other rights does the applicant or future ownership have under the conservation ownership easement?
Um, under.
You're still going to own it, you're just giving it an easement.
Correct.
You have other rights that you could have impacted.
Correct. They would be on, they would be simply on paper. They, they, they would be exactly as we discussed. I think the right to use the total area for the dimensional requirements, the bulk requirements, those sort of things, but at, at actual legal rights, very little because of the jurisdiction of the inland wetlands there. They wouldn't have an automatic right to build. They wouldn't have an automatic right to access uh, to drive, I believe, very little by virtue of that inland wetland jurisdiction.
What are you thinking?
I'm thinking that down in the future, the applicant is no longer the owner, someone else is the owner. What other impact could it be, could it have?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're okay with that. You know, if you, if you don't believe me, we could run that through the town attorney, but I just, I happen to know that just from doing this for twenty years and being a town attorney for fifteen and reviewing, having to know how many hundreds of conservation easements. I mean, your, 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 your rights, when you purchase a property, they teach you in law school, there's a bundle of rights. You purchase a bundle of rights. Those bundle of rights are the right to build, the rights in the airspace, the rights to access, there are rights to exclude others. There, there, there are many rights. When you give someone else specific easement rights to your property, typically the language that you build in there is the property owner reserves any right that doesn't interfere with the rights granted to the, the grantee near the town of Monroe. But what I'm telling you is there would be very little, very few left because of the fact that there's inland wetland jurisdiction. Those rights to access, those rights to build, those rights in airspace, those rights, uh, even to, to, to cut down trees, those would all be really very, very limited. So, and it runs with the land. So you wouldn't have to worry whether the owner is Central LLC or the next owner, that, that carries, uh, it runs with the land. It carries to each successive owner.
But so the, our town attorney will review whatever you do.
Yeah.
Okay.
But Commissioner, I think the rights have already been given to the bike path or the wa- walking path. So we can't, those are not the, I guess the best way is not negotiable. Those will never change. They will always have their rights. Part of the reason if we were to deed this, if that means that when we come in for the building, it makes it much harder with setbacks. We need all sorts of variances. So that's one of the reasons. That, quite honestly, we would make the future tenant of the building obligated with us to maintain this part of the bike path with the town of Monroe. Yeah, the town of Monroe is, does all the others in town. It's just that this one grows because it's goes through water and, you know, I don't know how long they go with.
Yeah, and that, that's actually one other point is that I, again, we can run this through the county, but I would propose is that we leave that existing easement as is. We just leave it as is because I, I imagine that went through your town's legislative body. I imagine that probably went through an eight twenty-four referral to the planning commission. I think we should just leave that as it is. It's, it's covered, it provides access, it's a binding legal document. Uh, you have it in front of you, you can, you can review it. I think what we're asking for is essentially just to quote, get, if we can, get credit for that point five seven acres. We wouldn't have to draft, I'm not proposing that we draft this new easement to also cover the bike trail. I think that would get far too complicated because we would be impeding on those rights that have already been granted. We'd have to go back to the legislative body. We uh, that would be too, too messy. But we're just asking for the upland credit for that point five seven acres. And the reason why, if I was to clear, the reason why we're asking for that is because we, that was a condition of approval for a prior building that was not built. So I'm just speaking in terms of sort of in fairness. Um, typically when you have a condition of approval, which is a, a burden attached to a benefit, you usually get both the benefit and the burden. Here, the property owners, they got the burden, but they never, it's to their own, their own choice. They didn't use the benefit, but that's our ask.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody else up here? And we go to the public. If anyone from the public has any comments, uh, or therefore against the commission, please raise your hand. Let's see, one, come on down and state your name and address. Please address the commission.
Uh, I, the paper's not there, but we know who you know. Okay, so please introduce yourself and put your address, but we'll be.
Two thirty-seven County Street. So I know I can't address them. I'm going to ask you because I can't tell on either, and I can't remember from the last meeting. Which I think the last myself was at in the last meeting. I'm unclear because I'm not them. So I can't ask them again. I'm going to ask one of you guys. This square, does that square represent the building or the building with the parking lot that's proposed for the daycare? What is, because I'm trying to figure out, I know Victoria and I go making over there and that's fine. I'm trying to figure out where is the driveway from Victoria? And what's the square? And I know it's at Wetlands, but it's like over Wetlands. And I'm just trying to place where the driveway is and.
This is a subdivision application, so they're not in front of us for the daycare facility. So one of the
Square represents.
One of the requirements of the bulk zoning table is they have to be able to fit a square of a certain size into the lot in order to prove that the shape of the lot is conducive to building in the future. And I believe that is what the square is.
They're not trying to drive roads or anything.
Yeah, you can see the square, you see the square on the bottom side too, on parcel A two. Yeah, so that's them proving out that they, I think it's a hundred thirty-five feet. Is it twenty-five for this zone? It's a hundred and twenty-five by a hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
And that's just proving out that the shape of the lot is conducive to being built in the future.
Just making sure I understood. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else online that has any questions, comments on this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, um, back to the applicant. What would you like to do from here? Seeing none, um, back to the applicant. What would you like to do from here?
Do that, that the public hearing be closed?
Well, that's the question. So the question to this commission is if you do want the, uh, information, uh, either like a draft conservation easement with language associated with it, more information related to the potential access of to Victoria Drive, if that's legal for residents and for the Town of Monroe. Um, and I didn't know if you wanted more information about, from the town attorney about the applicant's rights. Um, if you are going to submit anything else, we would need to keep the public hearing open because once the public hearing is closed, you cannot submit any more information for them to take under consideration for deliberations. So again, it's still at your discretion of whether you are requesting to close the public hearing, but if this commission is still asking for those items, we have to close the public hearing by July 10th and our next meeting is not until July 17th, so this is the last time we hear this. If an extension would be granted, it'd be granted from the 10th to the 17th.
And it sounds like you're requesting those things.
Why, I need to get something.
Yes, then we need to keep the public hearing open. We could grant an extension.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Then we'll leave the public hearing open.
So we're going to continue the public hearing until July 17th, 2025, and we will need a letter granting extension.
Yes.
You never went to anybody?
They did, no one had raised their hands. Uh, we were looking.
I keep us honest?
To the moderator, no.
No, I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, so then we can deliberate next on the subdivision approval draft that you have before you. So we're all included on this. Does anyone have any questions on this? Yeah. I have no questions, yeah. All right, well, the chair will attend a motion to approve.
I'm so sorry. So just for clarification, it does have a condition that the Town of Monroe will create a high fire hydrant on hot 2 slash 709 Monroe Turnpike and that this commission would also be voting to waive the regulations, um, for 111 dash 300 uh, for the open space regulations in order to waive our requirements for an open space method in general.
Right. Okay.
I'll make a motion, a conditional, uh, motion for a conditional approval for S U B 2025 dash 02, file number 1279.
Okay, motion by Westland, second by Ambrosi. Second by Ambrosi. Call the roll setting on my right.
Dominic Benicio, yes.
Again, Ambrosi, yes, O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, motion passes, application approved. Thank you.
Thank you, and just on the record, a very big thank you to town council who, um, worked with us in order to give us a little bit of extra time under the, um, exemption in order to be able to coordinate with some of the other commissions and come here. So we're very, very appreciative to them for working with us on this.
Anything new on the new applications, D on the agenda?
Um, text amendments, uh, this is all stuff that's been in subcommittee, but will be new to some, you know, commissioners here. Uh, we're on for the public hearing for the 17th because we had to go to Metro fog and things of that nature. So we're collecting all of their comments at the moment, which we'll present to you at the public hearing on the 17th. We did just get to Victoria Drive, so the subdivision we are looking at, the actual development of that northern lot for the construction of a 10,000 square foot daycare facility. They just did receive, um, approval from the inland wetland commission and now they are coming to planning and zoning.
That's it?
That is it.
All right, we have meeting minutes, June 5th, 2025 in front of us. The chair will attend a motion to approve meeting minutes as drafted.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 6:525 as drafted.
The motion by Westland, second by Ambrosi. Uh, discussion, any changes? It's not.
Yes.
Ambrosi, yes, O'Reilly, yes, Westland, yes. Right. Westland, the meeting minutes, zoning, planning matters, we need to schedule some kind of a meeting.
Yes, although it's hard to schedule when there's such a small group of us. But, um, we had some big things on the last agenda and I know we had a small, um, group. I know it's hard in the summer.
Mm-hmm, but we're the core here.
Yeah, so I would still like to try to schedule something, especially because we don't have another meeting for another month, which means we wouldn't be scheduling something until August.
I know, we're not going to be away actually until the. What are we talking about? Until July.
I mean, we can do something in July.
July 7th? That's the first Monday of July, um, gives us two weeks before our next meeting then. That was July 7th, that's 4th of July kind of weekend, but it's Monday.
Yeah, it's the Monday of 4th of July weekend, you are correct. I don't, I can be here, I don't know what other people's plans are.
14th is the following Monday.
I would not be here on the 14th.
The 7th, like, okay, it looks, looks good to me.
What are you doing? I mean, if it looks good, let's do it. We could also do another day from Monday if we needed to.
For which Monday?
And, and not, not like another day besides Monday if we needed to.
Throw this on there and see how it goes.
So let's try for July 7th.
Okay, 5:30?
Yes.
July 7th, Monday at 5:30. Hey, any commissioner reports? Here, okay, we can adjourn the motion.
Who was the original motion?
Make a motion, Westland, second, then it's unanimous. We are adjourned at 7:59.